I'll go ahead and call us to order. Before we get started, let me read the evacuation procedures. In the event of an emergency evacuation, an alarm may sound. Everyone should exit the building by way of the nearest stairwell in a safe and effective manner. If the nearest stairwell is blocked by smoke, use the other stairwell. Do not use the elevator. Once you've reached the main floor, follow the exit signs to exit the building and quickly proceed away from the building. Please be mindful of others evacuating and of emergency vehicles. That said, you had the minutes were distributed in your packets. Do we have any additions or corrections to the minutes of the August 24 meeting?
We have a motion and a second.
If there's no additions or corrections, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
The Stock Creek Design Review Board. They've already taken it up and they're, they're actually accepting votes from the members by email and they have until Thursday, a week from today, to submit the votes for that. So, an approval by this body, I think should be subject to approval from Stock Creek Design Review. Staff recommends approval.
Okay.
The chairman has noted that we approve it subject to the review.
We have a motion and a second to approve the site plan, subject to the necessary approval of the industrial committee. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. Motion carries. Site plan review for forty, four thousand four hundred and fifty feet of square foot office commercials spec building by Curtis Myers at seven twenty William Blunt Drive.
Thank you once again, Mr. Chairman. This property is in the process of being subdivided through Maryville. Mr. Myers owns a tract of land there and he is, he, he's been working with Maryville to, to get it subdivided into a small business park. They have already approved the preliminary plat. The final plat should be up, should be approved, in theory, this month. And it was on the agenda last month and there was a little bit of a hang-up on acceptance of utilities. So, that's, that's the only outstanding issue, so far as I know. So, Maryville should be approving that this month. What we're looking at is, is what will be a future lot. It'll be its own lot in a few weeks. So, we're looking at it just in the context of that lot. For reference, and I didn't, I apologize, I didn't draw this onto the, the overall map so you can get a feel for this, but this would be the southernmost part of that tract of land. If that helps at all. So, what Mr. Myers is proposing is, is really a spec building. So, having said that, we're looking at it sort of with a broad, you know, sort of broad brushstrokes on it. The office use, there is ample parking, you know, demonstrated for that. And if, if the, the suites, if you want to call them that, if, if they're used in a sort of a low-impact way, there should be sufficient parking for them. If however, as each, as each suite, or if it's all taken down at one time, as those uses are determined, once he's found tenants for them, staff will review each one of those case by case and see if it rises to the level of either needing to be re-reviewed by this board as a change of use. Or if any particular use is subject to the approval of a special exception, then it would go before the VZA. The site plan will be reevaluated at that time. So, but a, a, as it's proposed, now staff's confident that, that this is an acceptable site plan. Landscaping looks good. Environmental health is out of the picture because it's on public sewer and Stormwater has reviewed it and there are several things that, that he's required and we met through, met with the developer through our internal site plan review process and he's been notified of, of the requirements from Stormwater. So, overall, staff, staff recommends approval, subject to the approval of that final plat by Maryville.
Okay. Any questions or discussion?
Motion to approve. Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the site plan, subject to finalization of the plat by the city of Maryville. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign.
No.
We got to know. Site plan is approved. And site plan for seventy-one forty-three Flats Road Dining Hall Expansion at Eagle Rock.
All right. Thank you once again. This one's a little different because this is an expansion of a non-conforming use, which again is, is subject to approval by this board. This is for the Eagle Rock Camp on Flats Road. A little bit of background, it was developed and constructed before the adoption of zoning in the county, so therefore it's a non-conform use or grandfathered use. The last time the camp was expanded was in two thousand and six. At that time, they came forward this board for, for that expansion, which was an addition, additional bunk houses. This time, the plan is to expand the dining facility. The intent, according to the owner, is to allow everybody at the camp to eat at one time instead of eating in shifts. That said, there aren't any additional bunks being added, so in, in staff's opinion, the impact will be no greater than what's there now. There won't be any additional campers or guests, whatever you want to call them. Since it is a non-conform use, the expansion is, is subject to a different section of our regulations, but the, the main thing is you have to make sure that there's adequate space to allow for the expansion. In this case, staff's opinion that there is. Going to meet all setback standards. Environmental health and Stormwater have reviewed this one as well. Again, it went through our internal review process. Stormwater had no specific concerns. Environmental health has stated that they will evaluate the existing septic system to see if it's adequate for the proposed use, mainly because of the dining facility and the water usage. So, it is possible, actually likely, that either the existing system will have to be expanded or a whole separate system may be put in. But again, there's, there is sufficient land area and environmental health's opinion to be able to accommodate that. So, with that, again, staff recommends approval. This time, subject to the approval of all necessary environmental health permitting and for that matter, I mean, any, any applicable building permits as well.
Any questions or comments?
Motion to approve. Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve. If there's no other discussion or comments, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. Motion carries. Thank you, Director. Hearings lots three R through five and, or through, three R dash five to three R dash twelve of the Cox property. Doug, you got that one for us?
Yeah, this is a final plat. Those lots are in the off of, of Flats Road by Pancreas Construction. There are eight lots above every road according. And then one came over the lot three R nine, three R nine. And seven lots, which are by two common driveways. The outstanding items to be completed are on page three. I would like Mr. Finch to make some comments. Some members have been writing all the time. Outstanding items to be completed since ill with the others, that are still to be completed on the lot. This is a little bit long for a final plat, so I'll take that into consideration. Keep in mind, the Platte's Mitchell has the option to approve the plat, subject to the outstanding items, deny the plat, subject to the outstanding items, order for the plat. The reason why I say that is because over the years, we've kind of backed off, just making this very recommendation, and just what the plat's got, so. So, number one, outstanding items to be completed is completion of the common driveways, as per preliminary Platte's functions. This includes entrance aisles, heading entrance, ground service, anti-turnarounds, staff on spec, and according to the order, by releasing the final plat. I would like to know if you did inspect today and came up with, probably, you know, the cell phone list, I won't say the other side. But I will, I will say that the common driveways, the entrance aisles have been completed, the digits along the front have been completed, heading entrance has not been completed, and the ground services there, both the key turnarounds. So, there's a substantial list of the Platte's that you provided. Number two, bottom P O A documents to be recorded complex. We have a lot in hand, and they're good to go. Number three, operating facility to be certified on the bottom end here. I don't actually have that letter in hand, but I understand that the engineers are prepared to certify it. But like I said, there's a few other items that still should be completed in the process. Number four, final signature of Platte's completely fire around the corner. Electric and water, you know, forty dollars for a lot plating fee. Those are standard rates on, on the same sort of pageable flat, and we don't have a signature yet, but kind of getting to the process to get it going for the right now. Number five, the site has been completed on the front of lot three R nine, and eventually added the final plat and P O A document. That certainly wasn't on the line, I believe, but that's pretty simple to calculate. That's your, yeah, the question, and obviously, that, so I'd like to speak to the folks.
We have any questions or comments?
I've got one, Mr. Chairman. This, this might be a typo, but in the box describing the ingress and ingress, it says lots two R four and three R four through three R eight. I don't see a three R four. Does it mean three R five through three R eight?
Lot three, I have seen one of those.
Okay. I figured it was. Thank you.
And we have, we have the Platte's and the South's and the Central's.
Everybody on that one, guys?
Did you want some, did you want to make some comments?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman, if I could. Before you make decisions on this, or even going forward, I would be remiss to not tell you, we have a great staff. Marling, Thomas, Doug, Justin, they all do a wonderful job and they compile these lists, the punch lists. And we want to give every builder, developer, the benefit of the doubt of getting in and getting these things accepted timely. We, we even went as far as, I sent them back out today at two o'clock to see how much progress Mr. Pancreas had made at, at that point, and then we sat back down together as a group to look at this. And I know in years past, we've said, you know, recommend to approve subject to a list. So, then I think you get in the position of what's reasonable. Is a week reasonable to complete it and give them, afford them that ability to do that? That's reasonable. Four, five, six weeks? I think we're doing you, as a, a body, a disservice of saying, we agree, go ahead and approve this, subject to this, and it could not get done for four or five weeks. Now, is that due to weather, possibly time of year? Is it due to abilities or lack of abilities of that group? Maybe they only have a bobcat. You're going to get a detention pond done and a lot of these things on this list with a bobcat, bobcat, in a reasonable amount of time? No, you're not. So, in fairness to, to this body, we'll continue to sit down and we will look at this list and looking at the list and what construction is, is left to do, much as he read to you. We're going to interpret that and back into a timeframe that we think is reasonable. And I think each one of these situations will be situational. Depending on the size of the project, you know, you know, what are the tasks left to do? Are they simple? You know, we don't want to draw the line like other municipalities or other counties that say, here's a cutoff date, before you bring it to this body, it has to be a hundred percent complete. We, we don't want to go there, but I don't want to mislead you and, and recommend you approve something. It is four, five, six weeks out. I would rather we tell them no, don't even bring it to us, or if they decide to, then defer it based on the information that we give you that's left to do. And so, with all that being said, there is quite a bit of work here to do. Had a huge workforce out there today, made great strides today. Weather permitting, they're probably a week, week and a half out. And that's actual, real work and, and you, you as a governing, you guys need to know, is it a week or is it six weeks? That's, that's reckless for us to not give you that information. So, with that being said, a, as far as I'm concerned and what we've seen and what we've reevaluated up till two o'clock, they've made a great effort. There's about a week left to do. I, I deem that as reasonable. So, I, from my standpoint, I would, I would concur that we, we, we should approve it. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you for your input, Superintendent. Any questions, Darrell?
I understand what you're saying. And if it's going to go much beyond a week or two weeks, then it really doesn't hurt anything carry over to the next commission meeting. I'm like you, I want to help everybody that I can. And you wound up by saying you think we ought to approve subject to, and I'm okay with that. But if you really, if you really think you're more than a week out, or two weeks out, then maybe we need to roll it over. I mean, we'll be eating again in, in thirty days, so it's not like it's going to be forever.
Yeah. And, and that's a good point. Let me add to it just a little bit. And so, those that are not reasonable and over a week, we're short-staffed anyways, as far as inspectors. So, when we have a project that still has that much work to do, we're, we're repeatedly sending them out to inspe. Yes, this is okay, this is not, over this time span, when, you know, in theory, have it pretty much done when you bring it to us. We, we don't need to keep going out and going out and going out when we got new projects in this county, as you all know, is, is growing leaps and bounds. So, that's also in an effort to hedge it off before it even gets to you, you guys, of saying, you've really just got too much. Just, just don't even take it to this body. Let's, let's get further down, down the road and then let's bring it to them. But, but it, it is reasonable to say, with the workforce and what's going on and, you know, you, I think we'd be remiss by not looking at past history and, and, and performance and I, I think it falls within the week.
Okay. I, I, I guess this brings on more talk. What's, Kevin, what, what's the, I mean, I think this group's going to approve your project, but what's the rush you're doing at the day versus next week, or next month?
I think that Pancreas to trust by their, good chance to try to get this completed here. I just don't want to be held up for another thirty-five days, I guess, is the problem with the project, just like anything else. I think we're really close, offering what's getting done. I think there's list length, things that need to be done.
And, and I think that there allows that, that caveat, if you will. Say he does get it done in a week. He gets the plat signed. He's moving on. You know, versus.
Well, I mean, it's not like, it's not like he doesn't have plenty of work to do, probably. I mean, I, I, I'm, I'm just wondering from, I mean, again, I'm not one to hold Jason up, okay, not, not at all, but, but you have to draw a line at some point.
And it's not getting rare to y'all to go out whenever it's not ready and have to go back out, go back out. But you are for one staff, I know whether.
I mean, I'll go with what the group says, I'll go with your recommendation. But I think what we need to do at this point on, Kevin, and, and you can share this with the other people you need to work with, that we, we probably extend a little farther along before we approve Platte's of this nature. Not that we won't approve them, but from, just from a time standpoint, it makes sense. So, I, I make, I'm.
We approve the plat if, if we approve it subject to the, the improvement being done.
I mean, I'm okay with it today.
All right. We have a motion to approve, subject to completion, of the outstanding items. Do I have a second?
Second.
We have a second. Any further discussion?
Yes, I'd be interested. Could you clarify what, what you said? You said you are okay with this, or no? I, I, make sure I'm not getting confused.
At our evaluation at two o'clock, with what is left to do and what they are in the process of doing right now, it is reasonable, they'll be done within a week.
Perfect.
And I, I.
From, from my perspective, as a, as an appointed planning commissioner, I'd just like to say that I think that we should strongly take the input of the highway superintendent regardless. And that's what I wanted to clarify. If you're good with it, I'm good with it. Because that's, you're the one that ultimately has to be responsible. You've got to be responsible, so that's just.
Each time I, I'm going to come to this body and it, I hope that after twenty-seven years, I can sit down and evaluate work in the field that needs to be done and give you a fair and reasonable opinion. Is it reasonable? Is it six weeks out? If it is, I'm going to tell you. And they need to regroup or shouldn't even came to this body. But if, if it's doable in that reasonable week, I, I, air on the side of trying to help the developer and the builder. Time's money.
Superintendent, we really appreciate you coming in and sharing the information and we value your inputs, so. All right, we have a motion and a second. Motion is to approve the site plan, or the final plat, subject to completion of the outstanding items. And all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. Motion carries. Thank you, Doug. Final, uh, do, miscellaneous item. Who's got miscellaneous? Okay.
The last item. I have the Wheeler property off Meiser Station Road. We have a one lot off a private easement for a cell tower with variances to lot size and easement width. If you want to look at the miscellaneous items, I have them labeled for you. There's actually two of them here, but they're only going to record one of these documents. I just wanted you to see what the lot actually looked like on, on the first, first drawing. And I apologize, but I cannot read the lot, the size of that lot. Can you?
Twenty-one thousand seven hundred and eighty.
Yeah, twenty-one thousand seven hundred and eighty square feet. And you'll see an easement. If you look at the second one, this is actually the plat they plan on recording because it has a lot more information on the easement. And easement actually runs down to another easement that is to the benefit of the current owners. And I believe that Scarlet Plantation subdivision, that little tiny corner there. And this easement comes off of their easement at the end and runs to the top of the hill where the cell tower currently sits. I discussed it with Thomas, there's, there's no zoning implications simply because it predated zoning. So, setbacks and so forth don't apply. The variances, as I see them, would be, from a planning commission's standpoint, would be the minimum lot size, be health department approval of lot, but this is not for a house. It would be setbacks through the planning commission and the easement width would be twenty feet instead of twenty-five feet. And.
Ultimate reason why they're splitting the lot, I think, anyway.
I, I didn't ask.
We can answer that. So, it's currently owned and the owners are, it's part of a larger parcel, but the owners are, are selling a portion of that parcel, so it just needs to remain in their possession.
And, yeah, I actually looked it up. It's, it's for a cell tower, but, you know, in the past, cell towers weren't considered utilities, but nowadays, they actually are considered utilities. So, in the past, the planning commission has granted blanket variances for odd-shaped lots for utilities for like, you know, phone boxes, water pumps, sewer plants, whatever. So, it's, it's fairly standard procedure by the planning commission. We did one on Little Mountain Subdivision, I think about two years ago, with blanket variances similar. Just giving you an example of what you've done in the past. Oh, and the outstanding items to be completed. Number one, consideration of the variance, or the variances by the planning commission and submission of final Platte's with all required signatures and a twenty dollar per lot plating fee.
Doug, do we need to specify the variance? It's just minimum lot size, right? It's the, the primary variance is variance to lot size.
I can, I'll, I'll say them again and you can just agree to them. It would be a variance to minimum lot size, variance to environmental health approval of the lot, variance to setbacks, and variance to the width of the easement.
Okay. Does everybody understand those? All right, any questions or comments?
Is there ever going to be any other accessibility from that easement to the cell phone tower? Or is that, is that expected?
I'm not sure I understand the question, but this, this easement, I mean, it's.
Only for the cell phone tower lot.
From the end of the existing.
Can't be accessed any other property, I guess I'm trying to get.
I guess it could be. I guess technically, if, once it's a recorded easement, the reason, main reason it's here and creating a lot, once they create that easement, they, I mean, they could cut five acre tracts off it exempt.
Would this?
Not, no, this, they're extending.
Would you be creating, creating a problem at that point?
Okay.
Would you be creating a problem at that point?
It's not been, the easement's not been platted before. It must, it must be by deed, is what I understand from C two R L. Ask me a question again, Tom.
I'm just wondering, would be, would that be creating a problem if you, we do the twenty-foot easement versus the twenty-five, correct?
No, it wouldn't create a problem in this case. You've actually granted down to twenty feet for, for private road easements, actually.
So, no, nothing to be concerned about?
Not that I can tell.
Just real quick, typically with cell towers, there, there probably is an easement to allow access by the cell tower maintenance people to cross over that property. So, so as long as the cell tower is there, there's probably been an easement by deed, but this would actually record it on the plat.
Does that answer your question, Tom?
I think I'm probably a little confused in these things.
Okay, real basic.
I mean, I'm, I'm with you.
In order to create a lot, anywhere basically in the state of Tennessee, you need four basic things. I tell those people all the time. You need to have septic capability of the lot, you need to have electric service, you need to have water, either by way of public water or well. And then the fourth thing you need is access. This lot, this is the access to the lot. This makes the lot legal. Does that help? Okay, we'll talk about it later.
I, I think what Tom was concerned about is future implications. If they were on the cheap, were trying to use that easement to subdivide the larger plat and use that easement as the roadway.
There's a couple of things, okay? Like I said, there might be an opportunity to divide the tracks exempt. There's some other conditions that would apply, like electric service, like I just mentioned, but, you know, water could be waived because the lots are big enough for a well, but the easement itself would be established, so you could technically cut off larger tracks. You could also cut off smaller tracks with the approval of the planning commission. They could bring it back here and say, hey, we want to do four lots off the common driveway, but the easement's only twenty feet wide. Then it comes back to you guys and you'd have to consider the variance and if it was reasonable. But since there's so much flat in there, the planning commission can say, well, you know, go back and see if the owner will give you five more feet. And then there's conditions on what the construction of that driveway would be for multiple lots for residential purposes. This is simply a utility purpose, it's an easement of access for convenience and to get people up there to service the tower.
Does that make it any clearer, Tom?
It does.
Okay.
I'm going to go with that you point out even now.
Because I believe it's needed twenty feet already.
Okay, it's more work as well.
Yeah.
Could be a motion. Okay, so I need a motion. Motion to approve the, the plat, subject to the variances and a, a motion to approve the variances that Doug has specified. That is, there is no need for septic, there is, it is a minimal lot and the third one was.
Setbacks and the easement.
And setback.
Easement width, four of them.
Do I have a motion?
I make a motion for, for subject to be, second, recommendations of the variances instead.
Okay. And we have a second. Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. Motion carries. Long-range planning staff reports. Nothing to report. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen. We are adjourned.